Calling to order the Select Board's meeting for Monday, August 3. We are joining the Governance Committee meeting already in progress. Apologize for being tardy, folks. How were you all tonight?
Good.
Good day.
Good, thank you.
Everybody could hear us.
Living the dream, John. Living the dream.
You appear to be, Scott. Yeah, you look great, man. Who's that guy? Oh, yeah, that retired guy in the front there. I noticed him, too, yeah. Some good living on that call. Hi, Len. All right, so this evening we wanted to have a conversation. Sam and I have had some discussions regarding the Governance Committee.
Actually, John, we need to -- we didn't start our meeting. We were waiting for you.
Okay, sorry.
So we need to do that, and because we're a virtual meeting, I need to read a statement before we can get going.
Sounds good to me.
I guess I'll read it first, and then we'll do a roll call for us. So pursuant to the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 38, Paragraph 20, as well as the Select Board's emergency order dated 3/16/2020, Governance Committee will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the town's webpage within 24 hours in accordance with the Governor's emergency action requirement of keeping the public informed of actions during this meeting. I would ask all participants remotely attending this meeting, please state your name for identification purposes each time you speak throughout the meeting. So at this time, the Governance Committee will follow roll call attendance, make sure everybody's here. So I'll start enough before with Len Engel. President. Okay. Paul LeBeau.
President.
Christina Lien.
President.
Scott McKechnie.
President.
And Sam Tyler from here. So we're all here. Okay, back to you, John.
Thank you, Sam. Just to summarize, Sam and I have discussed the status of the Governance Committee as it stands currently. It's been a while since we've had any discussions with your board, since you formed, and since then, we've reorganized as well. Mr. Sperrle now joins us. And we thought it would be a good opportunity to reintroduce the charge that was given to your committee and hopefully discuss the points around it. Excuse me, Mr. O'Hern, if you wouldn't mind, for the record, would you kindly read the charge associated with the Governance Committee that was approved by the previous board, I believe, a couple of months ago, if I'm not mistaken?
So the mission is to assist in the development of townwide policies, act as liaison between all departments, boards, committees, and commissions as it relates to governance, help with development of a strategic plan. There's also an overview terms and profile, which Mr. Tyler has put on the page on the town's website.
To that end, I understand your Governance Committee has also extended its profile to a public forum. I saw something published a week ago in Holliston Reporter, Sam, where each of the individuals on your committee, their backgrounds and your experiences have also been publicly disclosed.
Right. I mean, this is really a way by us to introduce the committee and our chart. And we also had some questions about the charge, which is another reason we wanted to get together. I mean, some of it is self-explanatory, but I think of an organizational strategic plan is what stumped us a bit as to exactly what that meant. And we felt that until we fully understood the charge, it was difficult to proceed with next steps. And so that's the point of, I think, this meeting for 15 minutes to really go through the charge for particularly that point. And then we continue on with our meeting, and you start your seven o'clock meeting. So if we can start with that, so we can really flesh that out, development of an organizational strategic plan. So we're looking for what the Select Board was thinking in terms of what that meant in terms of our committee.
Very well. Before I tackle that, I'd like to give some opportunity to my colleagues, Tina and Ben, if you have any points during this time, if you want to bring out or ask questions or address Mr. Tyler's points. Either of you like to take a first stab at it, or do you want me to proceed?
I mean, I have some points to talk about, but they're a little off the topic that he's asking for. So it might be, I would defer to answer his question sooner.
Well, if I can interject here, there are issues we want to talk to you about as well. But we know we have a limited time before we continue our meeting and you go into your meeting. So we'll need to schedule another time to come back and talk about some of these issues. Because we have limited time, we thought it would be helpful if, at least on the charge side, we would come away with a better sense as to what you're expecting from the committee, so we can proceed.
Do you want to take a shot?
Yes, I mean, for that charge item, development organizational strategic plan, what comes to mind for me would be, as an example, economic development in the community of Holliston. So we have an Economic Development Committee, and we have a town planner. But when you go to the website as a resident, you don't find a planning department. You find links to the different committees and so on. And some of it lives, I think, some of the town planner's work perhaps lives with the building inspector, some of it lives with the Conservation Commission. That stands out to me as different from surrounding communities, comparable communities. And so that would be one example in terms of an organizational strategic plan, is are there areas where we know we're going to identify economic development in the town of Holliston as a priority? Do we need to have a strategic plan for the organization of Town Hall to help us get there? And so a planning department comes to mind. I am not saying that is the right answer, but that's what comes to mind when I think about something that would fall under an organizational strategic plan.
Sam, to sort of grow on that, I've envisioned your committee to have two phases. Definitely, the area that Ms. Hein is speaking of would fall into more of the long-term view. Each of you have three-year terms associated with your appointment. So I think the board recognized that it was going to take a commitment of time and effort to tackle things like the strategic governmental vision that Holliston needs to tackle going forward. It's been quite some time since a task has been undertaken, similar to what you're doing now. I believe it's been over 25 years. And government needs to have that kind of a view of itself to make sure it's delivering efficient operations to its citizens. So I definitely see that as the long-term view, the structural organizational function of whether Holliston's government is performing optimally. On the short-term end, you came to us about six months ago, maybe about six months ago, with some thoughts about beginning this committee and doing some research over some relatively straightforward bylaw issues concerning the financial relationship that the Select Board had with other governmental boards and committees, either through practice or through good intentions or what have you. There seemed to be some sense that a realignment of those goals, the functions as defined in special acts, bylaws, what have you, was necessary. So as I sit here, I see two phases. Phase one would be a review of those financial elements with the new town administrator, Mr. O'Hern, starting his second week with us. It's optimal to have your committee look at those immediate, short-term issues of aligning our financial goals with whatever the statutes and bylaws allow. And then following that, I would look more towards, as Tina said, the structural, excuse me, the strategic vision of what Holliston's government needs to look like.
Okay, that's helpful. First of all, I got to tell you, I think you sprung this three-year term on everybody. I think they're appointed to a one-year term, and two members who think they're appointed to a two-year term, so.
Is it three? So there's. Hold on, Sam. Hold on one second if I could.
Stay on for three years.
Yeah, that's right. Go ahead. Travis is going to clarify that.
The profile says one member for three years, two members for two years, and two members for one year.
I stand corrected. Okay. So I stand corrected. Thank you, Sam.
Just giving them a heads up of what we hope will happen.
Understood.
I think that, you know, we've started some work in terms of some tables dealing with town of Holliston, how it compares with other towns. We've got, we're dealing with an issue later in our meeting on 15 towns that have been identified thanks to the call. So we're getting started on that. There's been a start to bylaw review of other towns, looking for best practices and new ideas to bring to Holliston. But that's basically, I mean, it's following this meeting with the Select Board. We are thinking in terms of having a, we do have our agenda for later in our meeting to talk about next steps. So this particular conversation is very helpful in that regard to help us think how we do that.
And Sam, I know Paul's been working on that org chart with boards and committees, and, you know, it's this, well, you guys can't see it, but it's this big. So that's another thing that we've been working on, or Paul's been working on.
Right. And that's going to help inform us as to the sort of span of authority and the number of independently elected boards and committees. And we have to think about those factors in terms of the future structure of town government. So, and there have been, you know, new laws that have allowed for different variations of fiscal town management that we might want to take advantage of. We did, in the course of sort of our early work, sort of look at the Government Study Committee report of 1994, and were struck by the fact that it was admitted by the, by the report that the, we pulled, the town, or the committee pulled punches on authority of the town administrator in that there was concern that too much authority at one time would create a negative reaction. But as a result, what we ended up doing back then was providing for authority that was less than what was being provided at that time in other towns with their town administrators. So I think that's a position that we'll want to go back and look at again in terms of changes that we might want to make. But all part of, you know, government structure. So I think we, I think in terms of our most immediate need in terms of our conversation, unless there are questions from any of the members of the Governance Committee, I think we have a better sense as to what organizational strategic plan means and can act accordingly. So, any other questions?
Yeah, I just, so what I did is I kind of like went back and just sort of looked at it. And so I wasn't on the board, so I have sort of a different perspective. So I'm just going to quickly outline what I'm seeing is what I think should be happening here. A couple of them are, you've already said, but a couple, there's something else that I think is really critical that we haven't talked about yet. And so, I mean, to me, the main purpose is, is we want to outline the function of boards, committees, and departments, and make sure that we're updating the purpose and eliminating overlap where it happens. Like, you know, just looking at the, you know, and this is, obviously, we look to the website, but I found 38 boards on the website. Now, I know some of those don't exist anymore, but I think there could be overlap between some of these boards. There could be redundancy. There could be some confusion.
That's elected and appointed, you talked about, right?
Yes, exactly. And then what we want to do, the next step beyond that would be to look at the bylaws to make sure that they reflect the purposes of each board and ensure that there's no violation between state laws and other bylaws. Like, for example, I've been looking into capital, and Section 34 and the special acts in 1994, they don't contradict, but they both have language about capital, and it's not altogether clear what is supposed to happen. And they might not be in violation of each other, but I just want to sort of like look at some of these things as like, why do we have it in two places? Can we find ways to sort of economize and make things a little more clear? And I think the most important thing that I would love to see from this commission is to make sure that government works for the governed. I think that we have, you know, it should work for the residents. And when they have a question about, you know, like, for example, we're going to talk later on about Lowen Street. It's gone to the planning board. It's gone through traffic commission. It's going to the Select Board. And it's not altogether clear where it needs to originate, how it needs to germinate, I guess you could say, and then how it flowers or where it goes. So I think what I'd like to see, and I think is most important, is that instead of looking at things from a, how does government work within itself? I'm in it, and I get confused by it. I think what we need to do is make sure we're looking at it from a residence lens, which is why I'm grateful that you all are here. You have that lens. In addition to being inside, you can look at it from the outside, too. And I want to make sure that government works for the people who are being governed, and that they can, if they have a question, they know how to get it answered. They know where to go, and they know how that we can set their expectations that, hey, this is a process. I know you want a resolution in a week. It might take several meetings. We have to kind of go through a process, and setting those expectations. And I mean, this might be a little more beyond the charge that we've given you, but I just really want to emphasize that government needs to function that way. And I'd like to see our government function more with the idea that it helps the people who are in town, and it works for them, and they know where to go. Because right now, they'll have to say, oh, I'm going to go to the planning board with a question. Well, you need to know what the planning board does. You need to know what the question, you know, you might not need to go to the planning board. You might go to the planning board, and they say, you know what, you got to talk to the police department. And then they say, you know what, you need to talk to the D. I'm making it up. But we just need to make sure that we are telling, we're giving people an idea of what, where to go, what their expectation should be, and how to get the results that they, that are within the confines of what the government can and should do. So I think that's really the most important thing to me about what you're doing for us and on behalf of the town. So thank you for doing that.
Did you have some questions?
You know, from our review of other towns through their website, that means we're also looking at their website. And so part of the answer, not all the answer, but part of the answer is, how do we, I mean, it's maybe beyond us, but, you know, what's, how can the website be used to help steer the residents to the answers they're looking for?
I agree with that. Tina, do you have any questions?
I have a comment and then two questions. The comment is to just echo Ben's to let you know, I have office hours before our meetings now that Town Hall is open again, and I had office hours at 6:00 tonight. I had a resident come in to speak with me, and one of the things he specifically said was he's looking forward to the Governance Committee's work. He's looking forward to the work that you're going to do to make town government more simple, more straightforward, and less complicated. So that's fresh out of office hours from a resident. I do hear it all the time. So I think there's a lot of excitement about the work the Governance Committee is going to do. My two questions are, first, would you be willing to share in time the 15 towns that you've identified as comps? And the second question is, will you be looking at the Municipal Modernization Act? You mentioned looking at how government has changed over time, and is this one of the pieces of legislation that you'll be looking at?
I think if, well, first, the first question, we're going to talk about the 15-town cockable table. And when we're settled with that, that will go up on our website.
Okay. Great.
And to the second question, the overview of the work of the Governance Committee, which is on our website or webpage, does go through various steps that we'll be taking to identify, you know, changes we might want to make in the Municipal Modernization Act is cited in that statement.
Okay. So I did not read the word. Sorry.
It goes beyond that. So, yeah, if you read that, I think you'll have a better understanding of how it should work.
That's good homework for me. Thank you.
Sam, we have some folks on the line that are sort of observing our meeting. This is your meeting, so I'd ask if you have any interest in asking citizen input or questions from those assembled on the call, willing to recognize them, if there are any.
We do if there's a way to do that. I know you're going to kick off in a minute to start your regular meeting, and our meeting continues, so I'm not sure how that, how that works.
Well, they started five minutes late. We get five more minutes.
That's fine by me, Mr. McKechnie.
Yeah, well, we can see what we can do in a short time. But otherwise, our meeting will continue, and there's.
Are there any questions from folks assembled on the call that either the Select Board or the Governance Committee can address? Hearing none. Sam, any members of your committee have any other questions for us?
If I could, Paul LeBeau. One thing I wanted to clarify, and this has been very helpful this evening, is that in the charge it says, recommend if needed changes to the form of government, and then says develop an organizational strategic plan. And I just wanted to clarify in my own mind that if, as we encounter issues or ideas for improvement, we should, it sounds as though we should address them and bring them to your attention rather than waiting and developing a large strategic plan that contains all of them.
I think that's an excellent question. I think it's a smart idea to do it that way, Paul. Speaking for myself and my colleagues, I think we desire as much public input as possible. So if we can agree to meet monthly going forward, at least for now, as you develop some of these ideas, I think it would be a great, great opportunity for citizens and folks to get input on the various things that you're putting forth. So yes, I would agree with that. Ms. Hein? Mrs. Sperrle? You concur?
Seems reasonable.
Paul? So I think that's, you're onto the right approach there.
Thank you. Okay, well, sensitive to time, and your seven o'clock start.
So Sam, why don't I ask that you work with Travis to establish a date in early September to come see us, give us an update on your progress, if you have any material that might be getting ready for the special town meeting scheduled for October, or anything along the lines of what Mr. LeBeau just brought up, anything that you need this board's clarification on. I think early September would work for us.
Okay, I will do that.
All right, guys. Thanks so much for joining us again. I apologize for the late start, but looking forward to your work. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you. I think we accomplished what we needed, so we'll be back again in a month to report it.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Select Board. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, the.
So, Sam, we're staying on, right?
Yes. Yes, our meeting continues.
So at this point, we will offer a recess to this meeting, and we will reconvene as a Select Board shortly. Mr. Mayo?[1302.01] the lines of what Mr. LeBeau just brought up, anything that you need this board's clarification on. I think early September would work for us.
Okay, I will do that.
All right, guys, thanks so much for joining us again. I apologize for the late start, but looking forward to your work. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you. I think we accomplished what we needed, so we'll be back again in a month to report it.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Select Board, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, the--
So Sam, we're staying on, right? Yes, yes, our meeting continues.
So at this point, we will offer a recess to this meeting, and we will reconvene as a select board shortly. Mr. Mayo? I'm on mute. Tell me when I can speak. Good evening, Hollison. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, August 3, 2020. This evening, we have an agenda that represents about two weeks of work, as we haven't met formally. So we will start off with a community coronavirus update from Chief Cassidy. Chief, if you could join us at the big table and fill us in on how things are going out there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be very brief, as I know that you have a lot on your agenda this evening. We do have a few new cases to report. Right now, we are up to a total of 62 cases, 56 of which have recovered. There have been two COVID-related fatalities, which leaves us with four active cases. And of those four, one of them is at a congregate care setting. So that's been pretty consistent over the course of the disease in our community. Up to about 25% has been at congregate care locations. I can report that since the annual town meeting in July, none of the new cases were from households where a member attended a town meeting. So we've been doing contact tracing because the town clerk provided us with the list of all households that were represented at town meeting, and we've been comparing that to the addresses where new cases have been reported in the last few weeks. So we're very confident that we're not going to have town meeting as the center of an outbreak in our community. Do one, any questions on the case numbers at this point?
Just a quick one. Is there any sense of what it's precipitating, these new cases, or is it a particular event? Was it--
Our trend, they're not linked at all. So our cases follow the track of most other communities, which are seeing an uptick as the other sectors of the economy open up, as people become a little bit more lax, don't wash as much as they used to, don't distance as much as they used to, get together with more people, where they may not have been wearing masks as vigilantly. This is where the spread is occurring.
Okay.
So it's not, yeah, we're not one of the outbreaks being investigated by the Department of Public Health. The governor was pretty direct last week with regards to an unauthorized football camp, a wedding reception, a graduation party, a house party. There were a lot of large gatherings of people that ended up being the center of outbreaks in certain regions across the Commonwealth, but fortunately, we are not anywhere near any of those.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Do you have a question?
Yeah. Just wondering if you have a threshold in your mind, if we follow sort of the national conversation on this, as many people will be, though, I think that's a reasonable question that will come to mind, is is there a threshold where we roll back anything here in the community? Then first, maybe you start meeting with us weekly. You had, I think, had said you were going to drop off on that, or rather, you were going to change from daily reporting on the website. So things of that nature that we were doing in the height of the pandemic back in April, May, is there any threshold for you where you see going back to revisit any of those decisions?
Not yet. So what I've been doing is, per your permission to not provide daily updates, I provide updates every time there's a change.
Yeah.
So if we get a new case, I post that to the website.
Okay.
And I'm still posting a weekly summary for comparative purposes on Monday evenings. In terms of rolling back and becoming more restrictive, that was also something that the governor spoke about last week on a conference call with the Department of Public Health, that he has not ruled out the possibility of restricting gathering sizes again and going back to what we had in earlier steps of earlier phases.
Okay.
So I wouldn't, based on our experience here in town, I wouldn't look to necessarily implement that kind of a rollback prior to the state.
Okay.
Just because we haven't been one of those communities with explosive case growth. If that were to happen, of course, we would have that discussion, but right now, I think we can follow the state's lead in terms of keeping where they are in the reopening phases.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Sure.
Mike, you mentioned with respect to contact tracing and large group gatherings. The high school graduation was last week?
Yes, it was the 25th of July.
Are similar tactics in place for that gathering as well?
So they were required to have all immediate family members that attended the graduation pre-register. So we do have a list that exists. I would need to request that from the school so that we can compare that against the cases that have crept up since then.
Okay.
But based on our working relationship with the school, I don't think that that will be an issue.
Yeah, other questions, but there are other topics that I think you're probably about to bring up.
Okay, thank you. I do have one request for CARES Act spending that was not in the original spreadsheet. This comes from the town clerk. This is for about $220 for some collapsible carts that are necessary for her intake, processing, and storage of mail-in ballots that have been necessitated by the public health emergency. She's purchased similar units in the past, but based on the volume that she's anticipating, she's requesting seven carts, which are a little bit over $31 each, which is why the request is about $220.
Take a motion to approve the request for $220 for the town clerk's collapsible carts.
Just with a question, this is going to go under CARES Act?
This would be both CARES Act/FEMA funding eligible, I guess.
Yes, when I say CARES Act, I mean that umbrella.
Yes.
Then I make that motion. So moved.
Second.
Second?
Halls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great.
That's it for the requests that I've had since our last meeting together in this format.
All right. Do we have other questions for the chief related to the coronavirus update?
So that's a formal request. I just, is there, are there any other requests out there that maybe just like in the works, or is there anything else that you--
Nothing's pending. Everyone was, the policy that the board enacted, I think it might have been while you were still on the Finance Committee, was that if it wasn't included in the original spreadsheet of requests that got rolled up into our ASPE to the Commonwealth--
Yep.
--that any subsequent requests that came up, unanticipated, things that hadn't been even dreamed up, like collapsible carts--
Sure.
--would come to the board for authorization prior to being approved, just so that we can track the spending.
Okay. And do you still anticipate shortly having a report of some kind that sort of outlines what's been spent so far and what's remaining and such?
Yes. I got some reports from the town accountant before she went on vacation.
Okay.
And I'm in the process of trying to assign them to the subcategories and determine what is pure CARES Act and what is a split between CARES and FEMA, so that she can do the journal entries to reclassify them, because she only wants to reclassify them once.
Okay.
But we've got, you know, the reports that she gave me through a week and a half ago were in the order of 400 to 425,000.
Okay.
And again, so if you just think of the 1.3 million, you think, wow, we've really run through that pretty quickly. But remember, a lot of the expenses, if they're FEMA-eligible, the CARES Act funding funneled through A&amp;F requires us to utilize FEMA funds to the extent possible first, and FEMA requires a 75-25 split, 75 federal, 25 local, which we can use the CARES for. So a lot of these expenses, PPE--
Okay.
Things like accelerated telework capacity, signage and communications, grocery or meals delivery, those are all subject to a 75-25 split.
Okay.
So even when I talk about, you know, upwards of $400,000, a lot of that isn't all coming out of the 1.3 million from the CARES--
Right.
--because 75% of it has to be assigned to FEMA.
Right.
But what then also has to happen is, at some point, we need to do an application to FEMA, try and get that funding in, and if those are deemed ineligible under FEMA, then we put the 100% of the liability on the CARES as opposed to 75% of it--
Got it.
--to FEMA.
Okay, that makes--
And once I finish going through these 10 pages of reports that Sharon gave me before she left--
Okay.
--I'd be happy to give you a breakdown of where they are in each of the categories and which department.
That would be, that would be great.
It is my goal to have that in a pretty package. Right now, it's a lot of pencil writing, arrows, and hieroglyphs on a PDF document.
Oh, oh, okay. As an Excel person, PDF document makes me cringe, so.
I'm with you.
Good luck, and let me know if there's anything I can do to help you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Tina?
Yeah, so the flow of communication, I think, would, in terms of the CARES Act and the schools--
Yes.
--would be between you and the business manager. I don't really see them coming to the Select Board until they come to you first.
Right.
If the decision is made, and I'm totally speculating here, I know that there are three possibilities out there, so I am not creating one or weighing in on one, but were it to be remote only--
Yes.
I'm anticipating that the flow of communication from the business manager to you may include something like a remote learning platform.
Correct.
Okay.
And we would not be the only potential funding source for that sort of a technological solution. There were multiple funding sources for which the schools are eligible.
Okay.
A lot of it is CARES funding, but not all of it was funneled through the A&amp;F 1.3 million.
Okay.
So there were other funds that were available at the state level.
Okay.
And there, some of them were a formula grant, and others were an entitlement grant. And so just because they decided that they wanted a platform solution like that doesn't automatically mean that it would necessarily have to come off of our 1.3 million.
I asked the question because I'm aware of one community that did. That doesn't mean anything, but I would imagine that's a large expense, and so I would just ask that you keep the board in the loop. If you hear of such a large expense in any department coming forward, so that we can kind of get a sense of where we are with the remaining on the--
Sure. As you know, the draft plan for the schools was due to DESI last Friday. Their comprehensive plan is due to DESI next Monday, August 10, at which time it also will be released to the community. There are quite a few meetings going on this week with the school department relative to their draft plan as it exists, so we may know a lot more--
Yeah.
--a week from now.
And I know we can speculate till the cows come home right now, because anyone who is interested in the schools is actually listening to the school committee right now. All right, so then the last thing I wanted to do, and I will ask this every time you're before us, is where are we with the compliance report that we're waiting for from A&amp;F?
A&amp;F has not released any guidance documents, so my expectation is that there will come a time where all of a sudden, they're going to want reports for May, July, and September, all of those, because they had said that they would be looking for periodic reports.
Okay.
But that they, when asked for the guidance, were told that they're developing it, and they said they disseminated it once it was available.
Okay, last thing on the CARES Act is, we talked a while ago, I think it was right around town meeting, so it may have gone in one ear and out the other. That was bad timing on my part, but there is the LS guidance to say that the CARES Act can be used. They're broadening it a little bit. We talked about the way in which they broadened it.
Correct.
It now has a relative thin time to have that conversation. We could talk about it if not. That's something that you might want to check in on, is how is the CARES Act expenditure list, eligible cost list, changing?
Sure.
And do we anticipate it changing in any other ways?
Right, and one of the other things to consider is, in addition to that additional potential use of the funds, the other thing is, when we had first sort of developed our wish list for A&amp;F and come up with the 1.3 request, we were looking to possibly do some short-term rental or mortgage support.
Right.
And there are some other programs which have also--
Right.
--cropped up that could potentially alleviate us from having to be in that mortgage or rental support business, which could possibly free up some funds that we had allocated in one--
Sure.
--bucket that might be eligible for other buckets.
Right, understood. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Halls, Tina?
Yes, thank you.
Chief, and my colleagues asked a couple of my questions, so I'll be brief. Regarding the CARES Act questions that you had with Ben, I just wanted to find out when we can expect reimbursement for the charges that we've expended to date.
So for which one? So we have the 1.3 million from CARES from the state, so that's in--
Money in the bank, right?
That's money in the bank.
So the piece that Tina was talking about is the compliance piece.
Correct.
That's just the reporting against the expenditure, okay.
Correct.
That's what I--
And if we have money left over at the end of December, that would need to be returned to the state.
So let me understand this correctly. When you were explaining to Ben that there are two buckets of funds that we can point to, the 1.3 is just CARES Act, correct? So what is the total that you see to date leaning in CARES Act? Because originally, it was over half a million dollars, right? But it's below that now?
Correct.
Because some of it is moving towards--
Because there's a large amount of it that could be 75% FEMA-eligible.
And regarding the matching point, can you use CARES Act for the matching?
You can.
Yes, okay, great. Schools, Tina touched that. The last thing, folks at home should know that a couple of weeks ago, we signed a letter along with the school committee chairwoman and the finance committee chairman to appeal to our congressional delegation to try and get an extension of the CARES Act for communities like Hollison beyond December 31st. I know you're very active on a lot of calls virtually every day now. Have you heard anything in your circles about the benefit moving beyond December at all?
There has been no movement on that down in the Washington circles, to my knowledge. The other thing that you should know that we're working on, both the local and at the state level, is a lot of ambulance companies are being plagued by the rising costs of PPE, and it is not a reimbursable expense under Medicare billing. And so it works out okay for a municipal ambulance like us, but private ambulances who haven't had the same eligibility for CARES Fund, haven't had the ability to get stuff out of the cash from MIMA, have tried to source this equipment and don't have a way to recover those costs, especially if they have a fixed billing agreement. So I do know that right now at the state level, there is some push to the congressional delegation down in DC to try and address some other inequities. So perhaps extending the funding beyond December might be another thing that gets brought up repeatedly.
Regarding PPE, Hollison is in good shape at this point?
We're in exceptional shape.
Okay, good. Any other questions for Chief Cassidy this evening?
Do we have residents who are serviced by private ambulance companies?
So the congregate care facilities do often have private ambulances that come in to do interfacility transports or transports to routine procedures.
Yeah.
And there's a consumption of PPE for that, because the DPH guidance right now is presume that the virus is in a congregate care setting. So they have to gear up as if it were a known positive location.
We have some folks on our call this evening. Any questions from the folks gathered virtually for our chief? Hearing none. Chief Cassidy, thanks for your update. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on. We are going to tackle warrants. Mr. Sparrow?
So it looks like we have one warrant for a total of $456,119.31. Of that, it looks like it is all expenses. It doesn't look like there's any payroll. So--
That is that.
$456,119.31.
Motion to approve the warrant is read by the clerk.
So moved.
Second.
Halls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Okay, moving on. Public comment. Mr. Sparrow?
Just a couple of things quickly. First, I just wanted, since this is our first meeting since town meeting, I just wanted to thank the residents who came out under some crazy circumstances to make sure that we could do the business of the town. We got a quorum. We were able to pass what we needed to pass and get through. But I also wanted to particularly call out a few people from the municipal government, particularly who worked especially hard to make this happen. Chief Cassidy, our technology director, Chris Mayo, facilities director, James Keast, the town clerk, Liz Greendale, and her staff, Diane and Bonnie, the moderator, Bill Mayer, and the town accountant, Shan Emrick. And also, thanks to the finance committee for producing a budget that we were able to pass and get through in a reasonable manner. So thanks to everybody for doing that, for town meeting and having it work forward so we can do the business of FY '21. And the only other thing I want to say is, welcome Travis to your first meeting as town administrator.
Thank you.
So it's good to have you, and it's going to be fun. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And just to let Travis know that I have changed into the desk, so there's no chance of running away tonight. And I find this data information really, really interesting, and I am happy to share with residents at any point in time, but tonight, I received an email from the Trail Committee. Usage on the trail at Blair Square has topped 100,000 people visiting Blair Square since December 31st was when they first started counting. And so again, we've passed 100,000 people visiting our Blair Square. So when we talk about the town asset, one of our greatest town assets being the trail in Blair Square, I think the numbers speak to that overwhelmingly. So I wanted to share that. That's all I have.
All right, great. This evening, on behalf of the Holliston American Legion Post, I'd like to just note that this Friday, August 7, is Purple Heart Appreciation Day. Holliston has designated a Purple Heart community, and we want to mention this as a public notice. Commander Steve Brad had passed along a brief passage regarding the Purple Heart and its importance to our nation's history. There have been an estimated 1.8 million Purple Hearts or its predecessors awarded to veterans of our wars. The Purple Heart began as something called the Badge of Military Merit, an honor created by General George Washington in 1782, and it was for enlisted officers, soldiers who had performed a singularly meritorious action, and only a handful of these were awarded. Following the American Revolution, the Badge of Military Merit did not become a permanent fixture among the various other awards. But the spirit of the military merit would be honored again in 1932, when the Purple Heart was created to honor the bicentennial of George Washington's birthday. World War I saw the first Purple Hearts awarded to soldiers, presented on the site of the final encampment of the Continental Army in Windsor, New York. So please join me in recognizing this coming Friday, August 7, as Purple Heart Appreciation Day. So thank you very much. Any other comments? Move on now to a report of the town administrator. Great. Oh, wait, before I do, let me just double-check with the public. Do we have any public comments this evening? Hearing none. Okay, Travis, sorry, go ahead.
Excellent. So I have a few updates here, some of which are through our building manager, who's also on the call, James Keast, so if I say anything wrong, he can feel free to jump in. To start, Mary Boskett and I have requested quotes for consulting services related to healthcare. The agreement with the West Suburban Health Group runs through June 30, 2021. The scope of services, user data, and some other things of note were sent to six consultants. Those quotes are due back this week, and if anybody was unclear on the budget, $50,000 was budgeted in the FY '21 budget for this expense, which we believe the quotes will come in under. So if there's any questions on that, I can get to that, but I can also bring back to you next Monday sort of the results of those quotes, and we can get into it. Also, James Keast has put together an RFQ on 9 Green Street, which I think had been circulated. This is not a request for proposals, it is a request for quotes for engineering and design of the property. So just as a way as an update, this goes out, there is no commitment from the town. It's essentially information gathering. We are getting information on the cost to look at the site, do the engineering and design work. That would then go to town meeting for funding potentially on funding that cost. Then, once that work were done, there would be further costs associated, which they would define the cost of a potential project there, and that would be at another future town meeting. So what we're doing here is just looking for the cost of the design. There's nothing else to it. If we don't like the information we get, we can always go back and redefine the scope, but that will be sort of looking for information which will help us guide potential warrants But that will be sort of looking for information which will help us guide a potential warrant article in the future.
Can I try for one second, Travis? Will that also have the demolition? Is it an RFQ for demolition as well?
So, this RFQ is for numbers to come back that would include the cost to demolish. It would not include, the engineering design firm would not be the one doing that work. But it would help us know the cost to demolish, know the cost to potentially develop the site, and give us a number of different... And that could be done over phases. But this is essentially identifying how much it's going to cost for somebody to come in, look at the layout of the site itself, which is a complicated site, and then sort of give us the number that we can go off of to begin.
Okay.
I have one question. Is the sustainability coordinator involved in this RFQ process?
I know that he's read it.
Okay.
And so, again, the RFQ was sort of written on the idea that what we're looking for is how much it's going to cost for the engineering design. The information that we get from that is really what's going to inform the rest of the process. But this is not sort of committing to anything. It's getting a number for that so that we can have an informed number to put in front of town meeting potentially.
Yeah, I was just bringing him up because I know in addition to do the grant writing, you know, he has lots of ideas about different ways we could maybe repurpose space or, you know, one of the things that had been thrown around is, you know, solar panels or things like that. Just wanted to make sure that any RFQs might include something like that as potential opportunities for the town.
Absolutely. And there are components to it, which is after demolition, right? Water runoff needs to go somewhere. As I said, the site is very complicated. So, all of that is sort of getting, understanding that the engineer design needs to understand the scope of that. So, we need to know how much it's going to cost for them to provide the services that would then design it overall. So, it would be multiple phases. This is just the initial phase.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
And last comment, I'm sorry to interrupt you again, but a review of history. This board understands, if I'm correct, that the article that most likely would come next for 9 Green Street would be to request town meeting approval for funds to demolish the site. That is, as I recall, the 9 Green Street Committee leaving it with this board was that our first approach to town meeting on this would be, again, for funds to demolish the site.
If the RFQ comes back with various levels of remediation that include not just demolition but redevelopment and make safe, I think the article could be expanded to equip that if the quote so fits it. But I do have a follow-up question on that. Would it be appropriate in an RFQ to ask a bidder to help us understand if there are any available federal or state grants to help offset the cost of this kind of work, given it's toxic, contaminated status?
Right. So, included in the RFQ, and James can add in anything that I don't hit, but I mean, you're providing the DEP site number so that people understand and can look up this information before they respond with a quote. We reference the fact that we're an MVP community. We reference a number of different things to that nature that we would want somebody to come back and say, here are potential options for you. And so, that's included in there, yeah. And I think, again, the way it's sort of written is, we're open, right? There has been a recommendation through the committee, and that information can all be provided to them so that they have that background. But there are, you know, there are options that can be presented. What we're looking for is sort of cost of managing the issues that we know exist on the site and then providing some solutions.
Okay. Well, to my point, if it's more overt by asking the bidder to include any recommended grant programs, I think it would be to our benefit. Too often with these types of remediation projects, the communities are stuck with the bill. It's not a large super fund site or something like that. So, every little bit helps.
Absolutely.
Anything else on that? Good? Anything else, Travis?
Just two other things for the town hall doors. The invitation for bids is due Friday, August 14th. I know people have been waiting for that. Just as a reminder, $54,000 was appropriated, and there has been interest in the IFB that is posted on the town's website. Last thing, just as an example of the quarterly updates that I'm planning for the finance committee as I was watching their sort of FY21 process that I think Mr. Keast will be instrumental in is looking at some of the costs that have been accruing in fixing the police station. There was a, there's an issue in the wall that had to be opened up. The overall cost is under $10,000, but it's going to be sort of being absorbed through their budget. They also had an issue with condensation on the lower level of their building. So, just as an example, I would use this to say, as James Keast is doing these types of projects that may impact the end-of-year budget, and we're in Q1, when we're updating the finance committee at the end of Q1, this is a prime example to say, these are the projects that are being done. We don't know if it's going to impact the end-of-year budget, but we're keeping an eye on it. And those types of things, I think, is part of what I discussed with the finance committee is sort of quarterly updates. I think that's a prime example. And that's all I have for right now.
Real quick, on the police station, why wouldn't the cost for fixing that be covered under insurance? Is it too small?
So, and James Keast can correct me if I'm wrong, the insurance adjuster did look at it. It was not due to water damage, but it was due to thermal expansion, and it was deemed to not be an insurance issue. We can always fight those things, but under $10,000, I would most likely think that the cost to fight it would be greater, but we can certainly continue to go down that path.
Any other questions for the town administrator?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Travis. Any questions from the virtual audience? Hearing none. We'll move on. Next item on our agenda is to discuss contracts for department heads. Last year, fiscal year '20, was the first year that Holliston could engage department heads in contracts across the board. This was coupled with the raises that were provided to individuals. The task ahead of us, Travis, I'll be speaking to you virtually here, that what we would like to do in year two is to take the step of taking these contracts and building in goals for the various department heads to achieve in a given fiscal year. Their various performance evaluations need to be on record to reflect any achievement or difficulties achieving these goals. You've provided us this evening a copy of one employee's draft employment agreement from fiscal year '20, and it's pretty straightforward. It includes the amount of compensation, benefits, duties, and performance. These run, as I said, on a fiscal year basis. So, what I wanted to do was just introduce for your benefit, having gone through this before, the need to get these done soon. We obviously had to wait until town meeting approved a budget for FY21. But with my colleagues tonight, I just wanted to bring into the discussion the need to bring forward some goals and make these contracts a little bit more imperative, measurable, if you will. So, if I could, I'd like to open up some discussion on this with Mr. Sparrow first. If you've got any thoughts, questions, or concerns, Ben?
I think that's good. I do agree that we should, I'd like to see these agreements to be a little bit more personalized to the individuals as much as possible with some agreed-to goals within reason. Obviously, first year, things will be of a certain type, and then as we move forward, the goals will become more specific and a little more robust, depending on the department and the individual. So, I, you know, I agree with the chair that I think this is an important piece, and it's good to have these kinds of contracts for everybody. So, everybody kind of is on the same page and understanding the expectations that's put in front of them. So, that's...
Very good. Tina, any thoughts?
A couple, yes. So, when I look at this, there are 10 elements to the contract that's presented as an example here. I'm looking at number six, which is duties as defined by the following job description attached, laws of the Commonwealth and towns, consolidated personal bylaws. When I see this, just having finished the conversation with the governance committee, I can't help but wonder if this is an area that we would want potentially for review, especially when we go back to the comments about the strategic, the organizational strategic plan. That would be an overlap that I think would be of a benefit. I think this is a longer-term task, but those two do seem to line up. When I look at performance under number seven, this is exactly where I would see goals and objectives going in there. And then, in time, I very much hope that we'll have reference to planning or vision documents that are going to be created and that we're tying performance to elements within those types of documents. So, we can say the word master plan, maybe it's called something else in the future, but we're identifying it here under number seven, performance, and we are reviewing the success in meeting that. So, it's a very simple contract, I see. I do have one question. So, the police chief is on a three-year contract.
He's not part of this cycle.
Right. So, these are all one-year contracts for all department heads?
Correct.
With the exception of...
The town administrator, police chief, obviously, schools.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
You good?
Yes, thank you.
So, Travis, one thing that comes out of this is, well, who defines the goals? As town administrator, you've got a role and responsibility for the department heads that report to you. You've heard this board utter its goals. I would challenge you to bring our goals to your department heads and pull forth some meaningful statements within each, you know, respective department head's contract, have a conversation with them to make it a measurable, achievable goal in a fiscal year. For individuals that report to other elected boards, committees like parks or health or something like that, extend that to them as well, that the goal should be driven by the appointing authority to the department head, and it should be something that's achievable within a fiscal year and measurable. I'd ask if you could report back to us next week on a timeline to achieve this. I think, if I'm not mistaken, there's about 15 to 20 department heads, I think, total. So, it's a task, but it's something that you can pull off in the next several weeks, get the contracts executed. That would be, that would be great.
Okay.
Any other questions on the contract side? Any questions from our assembled virtual audience on contracts? Hearing none. We'll move on. Next item is to discuss the shared streets and spaces grant program. I think, Ms. Hind, this is something that you may want to kick off, if you'd like. You can take the floor.
So, I mentioned it maybe once or twice here at this meeting, and this is a program, grant program that MassDOT rolled out very quickly, midsummer, start of the summer, really. It's all for all communities in the state of Massachusetts to apply for. It is supposed to be a very quick turnaround. It is focused on pilot projects that encourage a couple of different key things, sharing street space to get people out of doors, recognizing that that is one response to the pandemic, traffic calming mitigation to make it safe for people who are traveling on foot or on bike, and then safe routes to school is another key area, recognizing that transportation in the fall with kids returning to school is going to be somewhat problematic, putting them on school buses, and so, opening up opportunities for students to be able to use other modes of transportation that get them outside. So, Holliston has goals in most of those areas. And so, the three proposals that we have to present for consideration address those key areas. One of the great things about this grant program is that you have free technical assistance. So, the BAR Foundation provided technical assistance. So, Holliston has had the benefit of working with an engineering, a traffic engineering firm, which has been, I've enjoyed that. I think they brought forward a lot of great ideas, and they've really fine-tuned the proposals, which you see before you. I, we don't have them to share up on the screen at this point, so I apologize to those watching. But I will say that the three, at this time, the three proposals we have before us are at Blair Square to expand the green space a little bit, create a pedestrian pathway to the square, improve a crosswalk to access the square, create a one-way to calm traffic, to place signage to direct people coming through Blair Square. And I'll point out again, we're talking about 100,000 people over the past seven or so months. So, signage that directs them to the downtown commercial area, which is fantastic for getting people to, into downtown. That's another goal of this program, is to revitalize the small businesses in a community that have been hit so hard by the pandemic. We're talking about a shared bike lane in this proposal being painted on Central Street so that people coming off the trail on their bikes will have an obvious way directing them to downtown. And I'm missing something. I think, oh, and then creating a little bit of a reclaiming street space for a potential use by a business that's in the area. If they wanted to choose outdoor seating, they may have that opportunity with the space that's created. All of this is temporary. The paint obviously goes down and stays down, but it's not the kind of paint that lasts, like the thermoplastic painting. So, that's Blair Square. Then we have, the next two proposals are essentially the same, just in...
We're referring to that as Front Street, option one and two, right?
That's correct. Yet we've got two different options to look for. They are, they are very, very similar. The details are small. I don't know if you want me to point out the differences between one and two for Front Street. Front Street being the road that's parallel to Blair Square. Both have a one-way. I think it's just where the parking is located is the biggest difference. You guys want to look another minute and ask questions, or can I move on to the other two?
Go ahead, move on.
All right. So, then the next two proposals are, again, basically the same idea, just two different locations, and these are to improve crosswalks at Prospect Pleasant Street and then further down at Linden Street. And so, the goal here is to address safe routes to school. We know that 16 Washington separates the high school from the other side of town and everything, what is it, northwest of Washington from the Miller, Placentino, and middle schools. So, improving the crosswalks improves the ability for kids to safely cross. We also know that it connects people to the downtown, so they can come in and visit the downtown more easily, depending on what side of town they're on, and they can access the trail, and then they can access the parks and Pleasure Point down at Winthrop. So, really connecting the community through these two crosswalks. They involve about, each one, about 300-foot section of paint that channels cars into a narrower travel lane at the point of the crosswalk. And the channeling has the benefit of alerting the driver and slowing them down, so you get better compliance with the posted speed limit. That's one of the goals that comes from this. You'll notice on the drawing that the yellow paint delineates a median strip in the middle, and that median strip has the potential to give the person crossing the crosswalk a safe refuge if a driver's coming and doesn't slow down. They have a space where the travel lane does not exist. It's a median, and they can, they can seek refuge there. They have here, the Kittleson engineers proposed putting up, again, this is all temporary, putting up water-filled plastic barricades that visually, they're vertical in height, of course, and so, it attaches, excuse me, attracts the eye of the driver. So, not only do you have the channeling to the lateral shift that gets the driver's attention, you've got these barricades in the middle. And so, those two things really alert the driver and further cue them to slow down and pay attention to the crosswalk that they're about to come upon. Those are the proposals as they stand. So, I can leave it there.
I would just add to that. So, I also sent to you feedback from both chiefs and Sean Reese with some feedback then from Ms. Hind again, that all that feedback has been given to Kittleson, the tech assist. So, it's just for your information as well.
Questions? Go ahead.
I have two. So, forgive me if I'm speaking out of turn when I ask this question, but how were these projects chosen for this particular grant?
So, we start, we start, so, I don't know where to begin on that one. The very first meeting involved the schools.
Okay. Well, I guess, I guess the place to start was who is making the choice? Is it, is the traffic safety?
The Traffic Advisory Committee has not met since February. So, this is not work coming out of the Traffic Advisory Committee.
Okay.
This is work that came out of conversations with the schools, with DPW primarily.
Okay, okay.
Blair Square, we had some input from them.
Okay.
And I'm trying to think who else has been involved on the discussion side of things.
I can't remember the people's names who've been involved in the Kittleson conversation.
We had a business owner who is adjacent to Blair Square join the calls. Oh, Trail Committee also joined the calls.
Okay.
Many of these ideas are, preexist, predate this program, this grant program.
Sure.
Ideas that have been out there, proposed in the past. So, the idea of sharrows, shared bike lanes on Central Street, that comes out of not only the Harriman Report of 2017, but I believe also... only the Harriman Report of 2017, but I believe also some of the recommendations from McMahon when they were looking at the redesign of downtown.
Okay.
So the ideas come from there as well. We have traffic safe, accident data from the police indicating the number of accidents in the area of these two crosswalks, so.
Okay. And then the other question I have is more about the grant itself. So now, could you just, like, you know, forgive me if it's a pedestrian question, pardon the pun, but is it, like, are we, you know, could you just walk through, like, are we giving them, like, we're saying, we're applying for the grant, giving them all these options, and they're choosing, or we choose, like, how does this work? And then what's the funding model from the grant? Is it something where the town has to, I'm making it up, pay for engineering, and then they pay the rest, or how does, how does that work? So there's the two parts to my question.
Right. So any community can submit up to three proposals. So we would come in right at the max, three proposals. The grant awards are anywhere between $5,000 and $300,000. So we're well within that range in terms of each of these individual proposals. Your second question was, how does, how's the grant structured in terms of funding? There is no match, and it is not reimbursable. So you're awarded the grant, the funds arrive, and you do the temporary work.
Okay.
Or the piloted work.
Okay.
There is the question of DPW resources in terms of painting, perhaps. So there's a contractor list for individual, companies you can go to to do the painting, but because this was such a quick program that was rolled out pretty quickly, those contractors are well booked. And so there's a deadline here to get this work done by, I think it's October 14th.
Right. So it's referred to as a quick launch, quick build grant program, right? It's been moving quickly, and it's been rolling. There have been awards already.
Okay.
And I believe that date is correct in terms of the end date to get it in.
Okay.
So were we to run up against, looking for a contractor, they're not available? We may, in that situation, turn to DPW to say, Highway, are you able to do the painting? Are you able to provide this in-kind work? It is not a requirement of the grant. It would be more of a practical approach.
Okay.
In which case, the paint would be paid for. Yeah, the paint is always paid for, so.
And then the expectation is the grant would pay for the, basically, for most of the, you know, I'm making it up here, and they give us $5,000, but the actual project might cost us $100,000. Or is the town on the hook for that remaining money?
So one of the benefits of working with Kittleson is they do, I'm going to blank on the correct term here, but they do the cost delineation. They break out the cost, anticipated costs for each element within the proposals.
Okay.
And that's what you submit for the award. That's what you submit in your application, so.
Okay, okay.
I'm not envisioning a scenario where the work exceeds the grant award, because that's, again, the benefit of working with the engineers. They go through all of the necessary components and price it out.
I think, was the question, after you pilot it, if you do want it to be a long-term solution, do you then need to come up with the funding? Is that what you're asking?
No, I'm just trying to understand the funding model. I've just been thinking, like, you know, I think there's some interesting projects here, but I just don't want us to sort of be in a situation where, again, where we're sort of like, oh, this is a great project, but we only get a small amount of the funding, and then town's looking to source an enormous amount, like, beyond, like, you know, some simple kinds of things. I just don't, I don't, you know, I'm just, that's my concern. So the permanence, I certainly, I think we have, you know, would be an additional discussion if we wanted to do something.
I would direct you to the grant application. I'm not sure the full application is here, Ben, but in the grant application, you'll see that there are sections of the application that delineate, that identify all of the costs in the proposal.
Okay.
They should be identified, and that should be what you're awarded.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying. It has not come up at all in any of the discussions that we've had, and Kittleson has worked on proposals that have been accepted, and they're seeing towns implement these, these projects, and we're, we're not hearing back from Kittleson at this point in time that that's been an issue at all. It's, it's not the design of the grant program.
Okay, okay, great. All right, let's answer my questions. Thank you.
So I've got a couple of questions, Tina, if I could, direct them in your direction. These designs impact the Blair Square area, and you mentioned that you'd had discussions with members of the Blair Square Committee. Are the recommendations in concert with the recommendations that we expect to hear from them on the redesign that they're proposing? For example, you're showing a 16-foot angled parking area on Front Street that abuts the trail, as well as a potential line for a crosswalk. I, I recall seeing a rendering of Blair Square probably nine months ago, maybe more than that, and they really redefine this whole area. So I'm questioning if there's a, if there's a synthesis, or is there a conflict between the two ideas?
So the Blair Square Committee had, had recently, very recently, last week or two, circulated the draft plans that they have to date, and a comparison, they don't conflict. And so this, the Blair Square draft plans were shared with Kittleson for review, and vice versa. These plans were shared with the Blair Square Committee by way of the Chair, Kevin Conley. Not only that, when we were, when I met Sean Reese down at Blair Square to talk about this, Peter Barbieri was present as well, and he's on the committee, and so we went over much of this. And the elements that are here are things that were considered by the Blair Square Committee. But I think the more important point here, John, is that this is a pilot.
Yep.
And so these changes are temporary and give the Blair Square Committee the opportunity to see what any kind of redesign of the space offers in terms of potential, and I think only benefits their ultimate final plans.
What's the projected cost of either option?
We have not heard that yet.
So there is a deliverable at the end of this week, I believe Kittleson will be giving us something.
You mentioned that the Traffic Advisory Committee hasn't weighed in on this to date. Do you expect the Traffic Advisory Committee to embrace the kind of changes that are, is this consistent with the type of program that the TAC would have an involvement in, Tina?
I would answer that in two different ways. On the Traffic Advisory Committee, the Chair is the Chief of Police, the DPW Superintendent is on the committee, and the Fire Chief is on the committee as well. They have provided their input, so then you're left with residents. The, so that's one answer to the question. The second answer to the question is that the Complete Streets Policy is a guiding document for the Traffic Advisory Committee, and this checks the boxes for the Complete Street policy.
What's the difference between option one and option two?
Right. So option one has the pedestrian access path abutting the business residential side, and by residential, we're talking about two homes and one business. You'll see that on option one, if you're looking at it, to the right is the pedestrian access path. So it's this dark, whoa, okay, well, that's not smart. It's this darker, there's a darker path right here. All right.
Oh, I see.
Option one also has the angled parking. Option two, I had parallel, sorry.
Nope.
Yeah, thank you. The parking alignment is a little bit different, and it shifts the pedestrian access path to the square side.
I see.
Okay.
The one-way is a question mark. We could go either way on that. I think we're going to end up reversing it and going the other way. Kittleson does not feel like that's in any way an impact on the design at all.
So as a pilot, what's, what's the term for the proof of concept? Are we looking to evaluate it after six months, 12 months? What's the expectation?
We had talked about this as something both, certainly through the start of school. You, you need to have-
Whatever that is.
Well, right. I think town meeting becomes a benchmark, because if, if it's wildly successful and you're looking to make these changes permanent, you would be seeking an article at town meeting or capital spending at town meeting, in theory. So I think the end of October, if we go by past history, becomes one potential benchmark in terms of a date on the calendar. Another one is the start of snow season, snow and ice, that we do have concerns from our public safety folks on how that's all going to work with snowplows and so on, and we would potentially pilot through the start of that season. And so I'm not sure what DPW, Fire, and Police say as a start of winter in terms of their operations, but my guess is it's somewhere around November 15th and just to December 1st. So I think that's the timeframe. I think we're looking into early October, November, excuse me.
So you, you complete the pilot at that point. What do you do? Do you assess it for permanency? Do you assess it for effectiveness? What are you doing with the results?
You assess it, I would argue you assess it for permanency. What of, what of these piloted changes are changes you want to see in place permanently?
And the cost for making it permanent would be borne by what, whom?
Determining the cost.
Would the town be on the hook for the permanency?
Yes, correct, yes, correct.
Okay. So it's not as though there's another round of funding waiting for us from this grant?
That is correct. However, I will say that if we move quickly through the Complete Streets Program, Tier Three gives us money for these types of projects.
Okay.
So.
And you said communities are allowed to have three, three plans or projects. This is one, correct?
This account says three-
These are three different ones.
Why is it?
Front Street is one.
Oh, I see.
The other are two. I would say included in the application that they want to see, and they give you credit for, is if you can reasonably say that there will be a permanent, that it will be a permanent solution. It asks you, are you piloting it solely to pilot? Do you think it will be permanent? I forget the exact wording.
Right.
And then, you know, I think the snow and ice specifically to the Washington Street ones are really, you know, sort of how to get around those barriers once they became permanent, and how you would make them permanent, I think, would be the snow and ice component especially.
Two things that we know will be permanent will be the signage. If you look at the two crosswalk improvements, there's signage that simply points out that there are crosswalks ahead and alerts the driver. So I, those are permanent changes, right, I mean, you could take them down.
The Fire Chief had some concerns about the plan. Did you want to speak to the mic, or do you want to just let your remarks stand at this point?
My remarks say they've been provided to the engineer.
Okay. As a, as a board action this evening, Travis, it strikes me that we're not quite ready to approve this until we have a cost estimate.
Sure.
So is this informational purposes only this evening, and then we'll come back in a week or so after you get the cost estimates? Or what's the deadline and the action needed by the board?
Certainly within a week, I think, is more, again, the idea here is it's fast-moving. So you want a quick turnaround, get these, these changes in place to pilot them. I think a week is very reasonable, yes. And I will say to the comments received by the two, Chief Cassidy and the DPW Superintendent, they have been forwarded to Kittleson, and I'll make sure that those comments are addressed in our next meeting. So there may be some revisions that you see, is what I'm getting at. So before we make a vote, you may see that the design has changed a little bit. But also wanted to hear if you had any thoughts on these three proposals?
And it would be a vote on an application, right?
Sure.
I mean, it's, it's not known that these would be awarded.
Right, right.
All three, one, you know, as a package, that's sort of unclear. But it would be, if we want to pursue this as a pilot in, in one or three areas, and then Ms. Hind's already started sort of looking at that application, and I've looked at it as well. And as I said, there's a couple of things we want to say, you know, do we think this is definitely going to be permanent? You know, those types of things, we'll have to make judgment calls on.
So I only have one more question, and I guess, again, it's for you, Tina. Whereas this has an impact on our streets and sidewalks, and I'm thinking this is the first opportunity the public has to see these, these renderings, may I suggest that maybe you take the next several days to publicly post this information and solicit feedback from individuals in the community who may have some questions or concerns about what you're advancing here. We always love public feedback. As you know, that's a densely populated area.
Yeah.
And I think any kind of public feedback on the eve of approving or applying anything would be very beneficial.
Yes, I agree. Yeah, and I did not, I did not want to encourage seeking public feedback until we had a board discussion about it. I loved the comment that the Kittleson engineer had to say, which is, your public feedback period, in essence, is your pilot. So you, you put this in place. I think there's some specific things that we need feedback on before this board makes any decision, but I think that we will have a couple of months of opportunity for the community to experience this, and we'll get a lot of feedback, and we can solicit that feedback during the pilot program. I really liked that about this grant program.
And, and just one quick follow-up question is that, does the, so I haven't seen the numbers from Kittleson, but do they include the cost of making these permanent?
No, that's a great question, though. When you mentioned it before, that was something I've written down that I think we, we need to ask, is what, can they give us an estimate on the-
Yeah, I think it would be good to, to kind of go into it sort of knowing what, what to expect.
While we're receiving free engineering, might as well.
We'll do that.
I will point out, when you look at it, though, you're, you're, in the end, other than the possibility of a raised median, but I think we're going to find ourselves abandoning that. You're talking about paint.
Okay. Well, that's, that's great, then it shouldn't be a lot, but I just want to make sure. I'd rather, I'd rather have a number before than after.
Fair enough, right, yeah.
Absolutely.
Any comments from our assembled virtual audience on the safe streets to schools options as presented? Hearing none, we will move on, with the expectation we'll get some more information within a week or so, Travis, is that reasonable?
We should have a deliverable, and if, if it's ready for next Monday, we can certainly re-engage.
That's great, awesome. All right, folks, we're going to move on to board business. We have some meeting minutes to approve. Sent prior to this meeting were minutes of June 8th, 2020, June 15th, 2020, July 15th, 2020, and July 20th, 2020. Are there any questions or concerns about the minutes that you've been forwarded prior to the meeting?
Just to tell you, I will not be voting on June 8th or June 15th.
Tina, are you good?
Yep, moved to accept the minutes as read by John Cronin.
All those in favor, say aye.
We need a second.
Second, excuse me.
Second, and I will say aye with the caveat that I abstaining from the June 8th and the June 15th minutes.
Got that.
Because I was not on the board.
Donna?
All in favor, aye.
All's in favor, aye. Okay, Tina.
It's a complicated yes.
I'm trying to look at Donna to make sure she's got the dates for abstention.
I'm all right.
Are you here?
No.
Okay, good.
And thank you to Peg Driscoll for helping us get through these minutes.
Thank you, Peg.
Very good. Now, moving on to the Lowland Street truck traffic, set a public, set a date for a public forum. I thought we had done this earlier, and that we, I think it was before we obviously arrived a year, but we had discussed having a comprehensive public forum to discuss the Lowland Street truck traffic issue, which by the day seems to get a little bit more complicated. I thought we envisioned late August, and for some reason, I think the date was the 25th.
So August 25th is the date that I know was mentioned. I just want to make sure before I go any further that that is still the intent.
And a meeting by itself, I mean, there was a whole intent, that this was beyond our regular agenda.
So it would be a Tuesday night, if I'm reading it correctly?
Correct.
And we would invite the planning board. I don't know that action items would be on their agenda, but they would post to be, to be engaged in comment. Maybe the same for zoning, depending on if there, there's there is sort of technical expertise. And then we have looked at, in a butters list, the Chief of Police did a drive-through to make sure we have sort of businesses that are not necessarily listed as property owners. And then the other thing we would need is sort of, as a public forum, it is not necessary that we go reach out to a butters, but we would probably do that as best practice. So in that regard, I would also be looking for direction on the radius we're looking to encompass. I went on a drive-through of the area, it is quite large, obviously, that you're aware of. I'm new to town, so I needed to see it myself. A radius that we would want to reach out to, to let them know by mailing, and then obviously, we can try to reach out through all of our technological means to do so, but that is another thing that would be helpful for some direction.
In terms of a radius, I recall that it was last, last year, a resident came before us, I believe she lived on High Street, which is just on the other side of 16, with similar concerns about heavy truck traffic rumbling down that road and on its way, obviously, to the, to the park, using High Street as a cut-through. I, I'm not good at estimating this, maybe Chief, if you could help me understand this. I'd like to include any residents in, in an abutting zone to express their concerns or recommendations for truck traffic as it affects their quality of life, because High Street is not, you know, on the inner side of Washington Street. It's not of Woodland or Lowland and some of those other streets, but it's impacted. Locust Street is a neighboring community, as well as Brook and some of the other streets, but is that a half a mile? Is that a mile radius from the, from the center of Lowland? I would, I would defer to people who have a better use of visual judgment on time, excuse- I would defer to people who have a better use of visual judgment on time, excuse me, on space, but...
Right, you probably wouldn't want to use a hard number for just geometric.
We're hearing from folks also on the other end on Bullard, up in that section.
Right, so you might select entire streets as opposed to just a mile because you'd hate to cut off one neighbor on High Street and have somebody else excluded. So we could probably look at a map and identify streets that definitely would be impacted.
I'd like to be more inclusive of residents' concerns because they're the ones that have to, you know, confront these traffic issues.
Well, to Chief Cassidy's point about people who, like entire streets, we could identify through the Traffic Advisory Committee petitions that have come in with truck traffic volume and speed as concerns and, and right away identify those streets. You will find on that list, Bullard, you will find Locust, you would not find High, though, so that's interesting.
I thought I heard somebody from Fisk Street also was...
Fisk as well, correct, correct, yep.
So the only issue as, as we roll that out and look at it on paper is that the number is sizable. And so in terms of in a butters list that we would normally do for a public hearing, that mailing is substantial. If that's what we want to do, we can do that. And if we want to rely on a sort of radius and then word of mouth, I don't, to the chief's point, I don't want to cut anybody off. So it's sort of direction is, we can go in.
I think the chief wants to... Go ahead, sorry, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess part of it conceptually would be whether you define it as a public hearing, which has been a butters list where you're required to mail things, or whether this is a listening session or an outreach session whereby we can use other non-traditional and technological, such as our blackboard and Facebook and all screen...
It is the latter. We envision a forum. We are listening. We've received feedback from a number of different residents for various reasons, but it is not a hearing. We will not be rendering any kind of decision at the hearing. We'll be taking in all the feedback and then consulting with the various stakeholders on a plan of action that we can take. It's likely to include a number of different things. It's not one singular rendering, one singular judgment. And in addition, at this hearing, excuse me, forum, we probably ought to invite our state rep and possibly somebody from Mastott to listen in and help us understand what's, what's doable or what other communities have done, sort of thing. So I would use the unconventional approach, as Mike said, but I would like to be more inclusive of the notice so that people have an opportunity to be heard.
I just have one question and it's a literal one, public hearing versus forum. A hearing, I understand that you present evidence for a decision, for a judgment. I would like evidence, so to speak, presented. I would like those in attendance from the town side prepared to provide information. If we can get that from a forum, that's fine. We need the, so if, I don't have enough experience in this arena, area to know if that's...
We can certainly start with the presentation, if that's...
I guess what I'm envisioning is a resident has a concern or a business has a concern and we may need some information to back up that concern. And so here I'm quite literally thinking of like a police report, something like that. In a hearing, you would expect that to be prepared and presented. My expectation would be that that's also presented in a forum, but if the forum is not the right place or space to do that, I'm leaning more to a hearing. But if a forum is an appropriate place for that, then that's fine.
I would suggest that we, we're in the space right now of being a forum. It could, the follow-up could be a hearing. It could be something a little bit more formal, but I'd very much like to hear all corners of the issue.
Okay.
I've heard a lot of complaints, but I also want to understand a little bit of the history and some of the feedback from the stakeholders who haven't been as vocal so that we can process all the information and then, you know, working with our people and state people, come up with an action plan that makes sense. And then if it's necessary to have a hearing to, you know, become a little officious or render something, we can do that. On the other hand, if it's something we can handle administratively or we'll have to start drafting bylaws, we'll take where, we'll go where it takes us. But I think initially this is very much of a listening session.
Okay.
Much less officious, as far as I'm concerned.
I'm going to push just a little bit on that and if we do end up with a Mass DOT rep at this, this evening, that evening, if it's a forum, are they obligated to speak or make comment or...
No, no, but if they're going to participate, I would think that as, as individuals with a professional understanding of commercial traffic within residential areas, that they've got something to share. We're not asking them to speak on behalf of any organization, just speak as experts, something a community, folks like us should take into account when we're processing what we're hearing.
The information that, sorry.
No, I was just going to point out, I don't think we're the only community that is coping with an influx of commercial or increased vehicular traffic. It's becoming more and more of an issue. And I think as a community, you know, listening to each situation is going to be different. We have to go where it takes us. We have, as select people, we have certain boundaries of authority and we need to recognize that and let the folks know that we work for, that we'll do our best to find a favorable and balanced outcome that benefits both the commercial and residential users, so.
Okay.
Very much listening, I think, right now, Tina, because there's a lot I think we need to learn. Ben, do you have any thoughts on, on the forum?
You know, it sounds like the, the word forum and hearing have more to do with just sort of the formality and sort of like the nature of notification and things like that than anything else.
I'm thinking expectations, too.
It could certainly, but I mean, I think we can set the expectations with an agenda as well. My only concern is I want to make sure it's a productive exchange for everybody. You know, I certainly want to hear from as many stakeholders as possible, but I also want to make sure that we have, you know, that we, we get to hear from everybody. So if we want to hear from residents, we also want to hear from, from businesses as well and, you know, there might be some that are impacted in ways that we're not expecting. And, you know, are we also making sure that, you know, how does this impact the schools, for example, too, you know, and, you know, school traffic and things like that? I mean, certainly this is an extraordinary time with respect to transport to schools, but they're impacted in this area as well, so I want to make sure that they have some, some folks who could at least, you know, listen in or... So, you know, I think that's, I'd like to see an agenda and I'd like to make sure that we, we hear from stakeholders and we have a productive listening session when we get to hear from everybody and it's not four hours of, you know, of...
Circular.
Of circular conversation. It's, you know, I want to hear from people, but I also want to make sure that we're, we're able to be productive with the exchange.
So Travis, I think a wider net is preferred. If you want to diminish your costs and send out a notice electronically, post it on our website, I'm happy with that. The, the expectation would be also that you'd have certain department heads available to us that night, including the fire chief and the police chief. I think Ben brings up a good point, to the extent you want to invite anyone from the schools to listen in or offer any input on that. Perhaps they'll defer to the school resource officer, I'm not sure, but give them an opportunity to be heard, sorry?
Trail committee as well, they have an interest here where there's a crossing.
Right, and so I would just say to the Mass DOT point, I can certainly reach out and see if they can represent. If they can't, I think one of the things that we'll try to be putting together is material to the point that if it's a presentation or anything in the beginning is sort of explaining the limitations of what can certainly be, you know, done by this board quickly and what is a process that goes through Mass DOT in terms of truck traffic regulation. And I think having the planning board and zoning board at least represented sort of gives that component as well, potentially. So it is on their radar. I think it's been mentioned about in their meeting by Ms. Heine. I spoke with the police chief earlier, the date was on his, his agenda already. The fire chief is hearing right now and I will follow through with, with anybody else that we think of and we will, we'll start to put together the material and the package for public outreach.
Travis, back in May, as part of our packet, there was some feedback provided by council on this matter, so to the extent you may invite Tallerman to join us, I think that would be helpful.
I did speak to him specific to the Mass DOT component, but I can also extend an invitation to him to participate.
When you reach out to him, would you please share him, share with him our Complete Streets policy? And I believe Holliston Reporter will share, I can't speak for them, but they've been great about this in the past. I imagine they will share any press release on their, in their newspaper.
Great.
And I do, just one little thing, too, I just want to make sure that whatever we publish, we'll make sure we're clear about the, the expectations and the outcomes from this particular, if it's a listening event, which is what we're leaning towards and moving towards, we want to make sure that that's clear, that people aren't going to expect us to vote or take action immediately, that we're actually just trying to collect information to be able to take further action down the road.
Okay. Any feedback from our virtual friends on the Lowland forum scheduled for August 25th? Hearing none. We will move on to the clerk. If you could help us here, we have some appointments, Ben?
Sure.
Mr. James Lane for the Taxation Aid Committee, go ahead.
How would you, how would you like, do you want me to read all of them or do you want us to get each one individually?
Each one individually, please.
All right, so I will make a motion to nominate, to appoint James Lane to the Taxation Aid Committee for a three-year term.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have a nomination for an appointment for the Auxiliary Police for Deborah Doyle for a one-year term.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. The third appointment we have is for Jaclyn Weiner for the, as Youth and Family Director for a one-year term.
You making a motion on that?
I am making a motion on that.
Do I have a second?
I enthusiastically second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the final appointment is for Emma Bridges as an on-call EMT and there is no term to that appointment. And I make a motion to nominate her for that appointment.
And do I have a second?
I second that with a comment that I have known Emma Bridges since she was 14 years old and she's a wonderful addition to the EMT staff for the town of Holliston. And I hope she's listening, Emma, because I asked Anna to let you know that I'd be mentioning your name tonight positively.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right. The clerk will read the gifts coming into the fire department, please.
Looks like we've got a couple of them here. So there is a gift to the fire department from South Street residents. There's no restrictions on this gift for, and the gift is for $80. And so I make a motion to accept the gift of $80 to the fire gift account.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have a second. A gift to the fire department from a Wilkins Road resident in the amount of $75. I make a motion to accept this gift.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie's?
We also have a gift for the library.
Generous gift.
A generous gift, yes. So there is a gift from the estate of Marion B. Smith in the amount of $5,000 to the library, so I make a motion to accept this gift on behalf of the library.
Any restrictions on that or no?
It's a bequest, that is all that is here.
Right, the gift account.
There's no listed, it's going to the library gift account as revenue.
Very good. We have a motion, do I have a second, Tina?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes. Thank you, Ben, appreciate that.
Sure.
Moving on to the next item, the entertainment license, Anthony's on the green. Mr. Travis, do you want to give us a brief update on that item?
Sure, so they wanted to have live music at Anthony's on the green. We said, based on what I've included here, which are conditions for approval, that if they wanted to continue to do that, they should get a entertainment license. Cost is, is relatively minimal and then we heard from them that they weren't going to pursue it again to do it, so we can defer action or just skip.
Yeah, so he's already had, he had an event already, you said?
I think it was two weeks ago.
Do you happen to know if the event complied with Porta Hills occupancy? Somebody's nodding yes, it did. Has it held out at the tent or something? Yeah, okay.
So the, in question is specifically to the conditions of approval that if they have outside entertainment, it shall not occur after 8:30 and if it does, they need the license. So we just said if they're going to do it again, this is the process.
So no action tonight because there is no application? Have you spoken with the proprietor up there?
I have not personally.
Okay. I would advise you to give him a nice lesson on asking for permission rather than forgiveness in this case. He operates an establishment on our behalf right near a residential area, so we want to be sensitive to that. The, the Anthony's on the green also had some, some issues that you dealt with last week, Mr. Uh-huh.
So there was parking in a circle on grass, their concern is...
Was the event associated with the live entertainment that night? Were people parking illegally that night?
I'm not sure.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So the, the response has been to look at how that parking was supposed to work when it was originally conceived, which the chief has, has done, going back 20 years, I think. So we, we sort of compiled all that information, but at the moment, the concern is parking on the grass could damage the sprinkler system heads that are in the ground to beautify. And so right now what we've done so that sort of enforcement of that area is, can be done, is to place signs that specifically say you cannot park on the grass on the back of the handicap signs, if you're familiar with the area, in the circle that's between the lower lot and the upper lot. And so those signs are going in and then enforcement will be looked at and then other options will also be considered as we go forward. And then the fire lane sort of signs are up, but we're looking also at, you know, potentially markings to make clear where is, where is fire lane.
Have you met the, Mr. Fico yet?
I have not, no, I have not, no chance.
I'd encourage you to probably schedule some time with him and introduce yourself, familiarize yourself with the contract up there. He and New England Golf operate two separate contracts, one oversees the golf operations, Mr. Fico oversees the restaurant side. The restaurant, clubhouse, if you will, has received a financial investment by the town over the last year or two. It's been a fair amount of work, painting, doors, people to work and so forth, so I'd like the proprietor to understand our investment in there and the need to maintain that space, especially outside as well, in a, in a very appropriate way. So the entertainment license is something that at this point I don't think we have any, any action on unless you guys have any questions. But overall operations, I'd encourage you to meet with him and familiarize yourself with his operations, okay?
Absolutely.
Any questions from the audience on Anthony's on the green? Entertainment license, okay, hearing none. At this point, it is before us to consider the next item, to disband the Town Administrator's Search Committee. They've completed their task. This committee was put together to screen applicants associated with the recently filled position. I will take a motion to disband the Town Administrator's Search Committee. Some moved?
Seconded with a comment, just to thank each of the members for serving, they did a great job.
Thank you, Tina, and I would agree with you. The, the members did a very efficient job under strange circumstances, virtual and all that, all that it encountered, working with our, our vendor on that, so thanks for pointing that out and thank you to the volunteers in that committee. So I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so that passes. And let's see. Next item is follow-up from town meeting. Following a discussion on Article Four of the warrant at our annual town meeting relative to the stipends, we had discussed prior to the meeting in a vote of three to nothing to propose a stipend subcommittee to review the value of stipends provided to elected officials in the town of Holliston in comparison with other communities and roles and responsibilities that these individuals carry out. So this evening I wanted to just have our board have a further discussion about the stipend subcommittee needs and any elements thereof to help Mr. Hearn draft a charge that he can come back and serve us before we open that up for public's participation. I'll start with you, Ben, if you have any thoughts on the elements of a stipend subcommittee?
Two things. The first is, is I think we do want to loop the Governance Committee in at some capacity into this process.
if for no other reason than to just simply understand, you know, how they're in the bylaws and how it impacts board membership and committee membership, which is the second part of what I would, my second comment, which is to make, to understand the nature of participation and the impact of stipends on that participation. Like, are there other communities who say eliminated stipends for particular boards and saw a drop-off in participation for those particular boards? And I just want to be cognizant of that, it's not, you know, I don't think of it as a carrot, but I do want to make sure, you know, we're fairly compensating people in the right ways, but we're also making sure that we're not jeopardizing participation of residents based on whether or not there's a stipend. So I just want to make sure that in some way that we're sort of looking at that, I mean, there might be a little bit of a deeper charge, but we have some sort of an understanding of what is the impact of participation for stipends.
Tina, do you have any feedback?
I agree with Ben, wholeheartedly about promoting participation in any way, shape, or form. And if a committee identifies, subcommittee identifies stipend as one way to do that, I think that's fantastic. I actually look at this entirely different, I think, than the way it was originally proposed. I I know that as a town, we absolutely acknowledge and recognize the value of our volunteers and what they provide for the town. I would really want to see this stipend committee, subcommittee, look at the value that our elected officials and our appointed officials provide for the town. To me, this ties into, when you brought up Governance Committee, Ben, I was thinking again about that organizational strategic plan and thinking about how do our elected officials fall under that strategic plan, that organization of how town government works, and what value do they provide within the working of municipal government here in town? That's how I see this stipend subcommittee, which is different, and that's fine. So, yeah, I'm looking for language here that could potentially pull that in a little bit, if that's what the board decided. But, I mean, it's essentially there in very broad sense.
While you're looking, can I circle back to some words? I just wanted to be clear, you mentioned elected and appointed officials.
I'm looking to see if that's, no, you...
I'm thinking the stipend is just in the elected officials realm. Do you disagree?
I'm looking at the language here, discuss the use of stipends provided to volunteer, appointed, and/or elected officials. If you want to strike that and have that elected only.
This is just my stab at it, we can certainly alter this in any way that you...
Oh, this was your draft?
Yep.
Okay. Ben, comments on non-elected, i.e. volunteer, appointed?
I think in some ways, I'd like to have the charge be to give a broad estimate, because I think one of the things that needs to be done is to sort of look at what other communities are doing. And I admit that I'm not sure, so I don't know if there are appointed officials, and we might find there are none. And we might, but we might find there are some. So I think it's, I don't, I think it's a good idea to start with a broad scope, so we can sort of see what other communities are doing. And we do want to be careful, because for example, in our community, Finance Committee is elected, but in many other communities, they're appointed. So, you know, that wouldn't be an apples-to-apples comparison if we only kept it to elected officials.
So these would be non-salaried appointed officials, because there are obviously employees who are appointed. So we're looking at individuals who are given appointments to conduct their work. Tina, you okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
I am.
So a wider net, as Ben said, to capture volunteers of an appointed and or elected capacity with an eye towards other communities and the essence of the participation provided by the individuals in those groups. What kind of an effect a stipend has or not on the performance of their duties. Anything else that comes to mind, Tina?
A survey of the workload performed by these individuals who would be considered for stipend. Again, coming back to my point about the value that they provide to the town, specifically a grant. You know, through the work that you're doing on your board or committee, you are seeking grant money and bringing grant money into the town, and we don't have a grant writer. So if it's the choice of the town to not have a grant writer in the way we staff our departments, then I think it makes sense to look at the work done by our volunteers. And I, I'm not saying we need to attach a dollar amount to that, I just think it's a part of the conversation. So a survey of work performed, I don't know how you accomplish that, and so maybe that's too lofty of an idea, but that's what comes to mind for me.
We can certainly ask the board through the charge to tackle this, and if they have any questions or clarifications, they can come back to us.
So just to be clear, I'm going to read, I could read this charges, I've written it with a couple of changes, if you'd like. And then the other issues that I put together here is the profile that was discussed, and a couple of alternative profiles for consideration. So discuss the use of stipends provided to volunteer and non-salaried appointed and/or elected officials of the town of Holliston. So that incorporates the non-salaried appointed positions, I think we discussed. Research and benchmark the town of Holliston's use of stipends in relation...
Shall we pause, Chris?
Yeah, pause for one second, sorry about that.
Lost the line.
Collect your thoughts.
I mean, I'm just reading here.
I feel like we're trying to get Vin back here.
He's not in Hawaii though, so...
Folks, sorry for that technical interruption, we'll continue, Travis, if you could just reiterate what you were going to say, which was a brief explanation of the charge.
So the charges stipend subcommittee would be to discuss the use of stipends provided to volunteer non-salaried appointed and/or elected officials of the town of Holliston. Research and benchmark the town of Holliston's use of stipends in relation to other municipalities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts with similar demographics and structure of government as the town of Holliston. We could add, to survey the workload performed by those boards and committees, if we'd, we'd like to. Provide a recommendation to the Select Board on or before Monday, November 30th, 2020, regarding the future use of stipends in the town of Holliston for all boards and committees, and if stipends should be used, determine the appropriate amount of said stipends. I mean, that could be more aggressive than you're looking for, but that's, this is my crack at a chart. The profile of this subcommittee was discussed, would be the ideal composition of the subcommittee would include five Holliston residents that are not currently seated on any boards and committees. And I also have here just some alternative profile options. As I'm anticipating a struggle potentially with seating it, would be, one would be to charge, give the charge of the stipend subcommittee to the Governance Committee, I think was briefly discussed. Or if we couldn't get five specifically, that the subcommittee could include two representatives from existing boards and committees, but then three, which would be the quorum of residents not seated on other boards and committees. If we could not sort of get five, would be two alternatives.
The only problem I have with that is I think November 30th is a little aggressive.
Yeah, I was going to ask, when does Q2 end? You said you're going to do quarterly updates, would this be better, maybe timed for something like that? And certainly the Finance Committee goes into their budget planning, January, Ben, is that right?
Yeah, well, they'll be starting to put the, put things together in December, but I think, yeah, January. Probably want to have it for the, probably want to have it for budget season, so probably like January 1 or so, where they're coming into meetings, if there is going to be changes.
No problem.
Or proposed, that that would be at that, at that time.
If they need more time, they can ask us for it, but I think that gives us a little bit of breathing room.
Good.
I don't have a problem with the alternative profile option of number two. I'm just putting it out there, doesn't have to be that way, but I don't have an issue with that. Yeah, I think when you look at, well, I think we see, often see overlap. I think you, the committee we just disbanded and the Governance Committee that just presented tonight, we see overlap there. So I think we're fishing in the same pool, pond, is that what you're saying?
Perhaps, perhaps, but why don't we give it a chance to have some new folks enter the picture, the chief has his hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the scope of positions covered. Can you repeat the phrase that was used?
Discuss the use of stipends provided to volunteer non-salaried appointed and/or elected officials of the town of Holliston. One of those lines was added, so we may have to read.
Right, I just, I know it was a third rail during the town meeting, and I just want to make sure that this doesn't end up including the stipends provided to on-call fire and EMS personnel. Because with some additional language, one could argue that my personnel would now be covered by the scope of this committee.
Is it as simple as adding performing their duties on a board or committee? As opposed to a department?
So boards and committees is mentioned lower on, but I could, we could reiterate it, absolutely.
Right, because my personnel are normally appointed, and they're non-salaried, so I just want to...
Good point.
Why, why wouldn't we want them included, Mike?
Oh, I think an elected assessor stipend is very different than a stipend for a qualified firefighter.
Oh, it is, definitely, but if we're looking at stipends provided to non-elected people, why wouldn't, why wouldn't we want to look at the stipends paid to firefighters? It's been some time, I believe it's been over 10 years since we looked at the stipends assigned to the fire department. We could find that they're undervalued. Or perhaps revisit some of the decisions made at that time. Why wouldn't, I'm asking rhetorically, like, why wouldn't you? If you're going to look at stipends across the town, study them.
Sure.
What's so different?
I just think it's apples and oranges.
Because of the duties?
Correct.
But then every duty associated with an elected or appointed person is different. Somebody who serves on the planning board is doing different work than somebody who's on the school committee.
I could identify two significant differences. One is, and I'm not sure on all the specifics, but your, the on-call firefighters are required to have, what are their professional requirements?
So they're trained to obey standard.
Okay.
Which would be very similar to the argument that was made by the assessors.
Similar, but a little different, and then the other is in terms of...
EMTs have to maintain state certifications as well.
And there's an ongoing cost to that, which puts them in a little bit of a different class. But the other piece is, they have a specific shift duty responsibility. So are they required to perform a certain number of shifts for the town?
For eligibility for receiving the stipend, yes.
That to me is different, I mean, I know we have a duty that we're here on Monday night, but, I don't know, that, so you asked a question.
I'm not opposed to being evaluated, as the department head, I'm always going to advocate for them and making sure that we're getting market value, but at the same time, I don't want my specific departmental staffing issues to be a distraction from the overarching issue which bubbled up.
Ben, any thoughts?
I think, I don't think there's any harm in evaluating fair compensation for everybody that receiving a stipend. I mean, and maybe to that end, maybe it's, you know, maybe there's a different word to use, I guess you could say. I mean, if that's the route we want to go. And plus, if they're just going to make recommendations, at the end of the day, if we don't feel that they're, that they're correct or proper, we can always ignore the recommendation. So I'm in favor of including, making sure, especially since we haven't done it in a few years, to, you know, take another look to make sure that they're getting fair, fair compensation. Although now Vin is in Hawaii, so I wonder what...
I noticed that, yeah.
He's come out of the, he's come back from his vacation to speak to us.
Look at Marion, look at her. Would you open up here?
Let's, hold on, hold on.
Do we need to turn the volume up on that?
Probably, yeah. To the right, there, top on the right, yeah.
Is it better? Sorry, do we have comments from the virtual audience that want to participate in this conversation?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Ben.
Can I participate? And I know, I see Mary, so who's going first?
Right ahead first, no, I want to hear about Hawaii first.
That's what I'm calling, coming back from North Carolina, we flew out of Hawaii, so, no. The, we, I believe we've already gone through the stipends for the fire department and EMTs two or three years ago. It's been since I've been on the FinCom that we went through it, so a whole looking at it, and Chief can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe, I know Morrison was on the Select Board, and I believe Jay Larry was on the Select Board, so whatever cycle it was. So those have already been reviewed recently, so it wasn't like it was 10 years ago, like you said, John. So I personally, and it's up to you, you're the Select Board, but I would say this is not, the issue wasn't really the select fire stipends, it was totally based off of the elected boards. Now, if you want to get into the other appointed boards, that's a different thing. But I think that comes towards a different budget, the fireman stipend versus all the other stipends in town. That's my opinion.
Thanks, Ben, Mary?
As someone who obviously gets a stipend, I do not see any, any relationship between what I get and what members of the fire department get. I'm not committed to, and even the level of training, how long it takes, what the stipend covers in terms of how many hours, in terms of weekends and duties, and this, that, and the other thing. Whoever said apples to oranges, I think you're getting stuck in the word stipend. The word stipend means nothing more than salary, if you look it up. So if you're going to open up a salary discussion, are you now opening it up to everybody who gets a salary? I don't think that's what you meant to do. But I just, this is, this is so different, this is just so different, and I just don't, I mean, this is, the whole thought about stipends, the only reason that the ones that exist now continue to exist is because historically, they were paid positions, because those people in those offices really did the job every single day, or week, or whatever. And over time, that just, you know, changed with staff and stuff. That's not the situation with the fire department at all. And I think that to open it is just, as a possibility, I think it makes the scope of this so much bigger. And I always get really, really nervous when we start having conversations that talk about fire departments becoming full-time departments. I just think you're opening up a whole discussion that just, it doesn't belong on the table, so.
All set, Mary? Chief, you, I think, had a follow-up conversation, a comment before we recognize those folks.
I did, and it builds on what Mary said with regards to the language of stipend, because I was going to also proffer that there is a department up the street that has a lot of stipend positions as well. So if you start to expand it to fire and EMS, at what point do we rein it in? And we're not talking about the advisor for the National Honor Society, the coach for the winter trek, and all of those stipend positions as well. And to Mary's point, it can become quite unwieldy.
I see. Any other comments from the virtual audience this evening on the stipend issue? Hearing none. Ben, any final thoughts on the stipend scope?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not looking to create a giant unwieldy thing. But it is also, to me, you know, I obviously don't want to look at anybody up the street for this, this isn't the scope of what we want to do. And if, my concern was hearing that if you hadn't had a study in 10, 15 years, that maybe they needed some refreshing. That's kind of the impetus for that, it wasn't me saying that there should was any, just like, let's reevaluate. But if it's happened more recently, then I would probably say that let's move beyond the, including the fire department, and we just have it be about elected and appointed board and committee members in the community.
Just briefly on that, Ben, just to team back on what you were saying regarding your understanding of the history of the firefighter stipend, Mike, you know this better than I do, but under a term of about 15 years ago, the stipends associated with the firefighters were completely undervalued. They were problematic for this board to deal with, and I recall one chairman making promises that he would attend to the increases over a staged timeframe, I think it was three years, if my recollection serves me correct. That the achievement of a certain stipend level would be reached. I'm guessing that by the time that final piece was put in place is when Vin is referring to, about three to five years ago. But the apparatus of the stipend that the firefighters get right now was a long-term plan that was hatched a long time ago. Would you agree with the sort of the essence of it? And Vin, so I think we're kind of saying the same thing. You may have witnessed or recalled the back end of a stipend. You may have witnessed or recalled the back end of a stipend system that was put in place at least ten years ago, probably more than that, if we are now ten years.
And I'm always willing to benchmark against other similar departments during any budget cycle or off-budget cycle, as the board deems appropriate.
Tina, any thoughts on the scope of the stipend?
I agree with, as read by Travis about ten, fifteen minutes ago, or whatever it was, I don't mean to make a joke about the time. I would not want to see the fire employees...
All right, Travis, if you could, take your draft, dust it up, bring it back next week, we'll take a vote on it.
Great.
And we'll start moving in the direction of recruiting some folks for it, and we'll see how far, how far that gets us.
Okay.
If we encounter any difficulty with that, we may look at option two, which would be to consult with the Governance Committee to see if they can absorb it or not.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So the, the boards and committees will be added to that first line, so we're, we're clear on who we're looking at for stipends, and I will bring you another draft and change the date as well.
Good.
I'm good.
All right.
Absolutely.
Moving on. Any other business? Any final comments, Mr. Sparrow?
I have no final comments.
Ms. Hyne, any final comments?
One is to confirm that we have set, yes, the, set the August 25th meeting? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And two is to ask, next week, or soon to be, maybe in August, meeting, the T update, your update on the Pine Crest lights for the crosswalks. There are two that are supposed to be, I believe, on order, and I, last time I drove by, they were not in place yet, so I, I'm just curious for an update, that's all. So it's the Pine Crest crosswalk pedestrian lights.
Okay.
That would be a Sean Reese, I, I think that was a Sean Reese action item.
I believe it was.
And Travis, when does Q2 end?
Q2 would be the end of the actual calendar year.
December 31st.
Fiscal year, yeah.